I'm going to go ahead and call this evening's meeting of the Clayton City Council to order for October 16th. Please show that the council members are here with the exception of Councilmember Diaz. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the consent calendar.
I'd like to move for discussion 3C.
All right.
Otherwise, move approval of the remainder.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and approved then that, excuse me, moved and seconded that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of 3C, which we will discuss after this. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no one opposed?
All right, so as to 3C, I looked at this in preparation for the meeting and had some discussions with both Mala and Gary. I am concerned with the lack of oversight or ability for the city council to be involved and to be aware of these things. And this is not in any way directed at our current city manager or anything because I have the utmost faith in him, having dealt with him for 16-plus years here. And this is more as an attorney, looking at the worst possible scenario and looking down the road at a city manager that we hire who may, you know, have, be best friends with somebody or do something, and somehow there's no oversight. And the reality is, is the city manager is tasked with the day-to-day running, we're the big picture, but this particular subject can involve some significant expense down the road, given these designations. As Gary and I discussed, it may not matter because a lot of it is governed by both CalPERS and the workers' comp system, which we don't have a whole lot of control over, and it's not a great system, but it is the system we have. So what I was concerned about was just having some ability to be aware of it and to be able to discuss it or to address it. Now, the outcome may be the same. And so what, Gary talked with Mala, and Mala did a little more investigation, and then I talked with Mala, and there may be a way to put, have the mayor designate a subcommittee of two council members that can work with this and not violate HIPAA, not violate all of those things. But it was kind of a little bit uncertain, and council was concerned that CalPERS, shockingly, might disagree. And so I think that it's probably best to push this over and let us look at, and make sure we can do a subcommittee and be very comfortable with that, and be able to discuss that, and then maybe do it at a next meeting, just so that we don't rush into anything there. But I think that this is important enough topic with, you know, our city and the finances that we should have some oversight from the council level on that, and it appears that the way we can do that is through a subcommittee. So that's what I'm proposing, is that we push this over, make sure that staff and city attorney are comfortable with that proposal, and then come back to us with language that works. Obviously, we don't want to get into a fight if we don't have to, but I think this is, you know, important enough that we do that, so.
So that's the process you're proposing then, and we would await then, what would be the trigger then to put it on the agenda?
Well, the trigger would be on the next, I think we probably need to do it sooner rather than later, so, but I was a little uncomfortable. I didn't want to put Mala and Gary right on the spot with some of the questions I was raising without being able to do the research and make sure. So I would say that we push this to the next meeting with the idea, though, that we're looking at appointing a council subcommittee that will work with this issue, and the subcommittee can work with the city manager and get his input, which would be invaluable and necessary, I think. But that protects, I think, our duty to the citizens of oversight and also brings in Gary's expertise with the workers that he deals with on a daily basis.
Could I suggest then, you're saying the next meeting, we might modify that a bit to be when staff is prepared?
Well, sure, yeah. If Mala can't get to it in two weeks, then that's fine, but I just think that we need to have a little bit of council oversight on that, and so that was the discussion I had.
More discussion? Tuy?
No, I don't know if, Mr. Napper, if you have any, does that sound, subcommittee, does that sound like, do you know of other cities that have done something like that, or?
Actually, Councilmember, we do not, but we haven't done an exhaustive research in the little time that was brought up. And I think what Vice Mayor Shuey is alluding to is that you'd be using a subcommittee, but that subcommittee would not be a standing committee, because if it's a standing committee, then it's still subject to a public meeting, and if it's subject to a public meeting, we still find ourselves in conflict with HIPAA laws and individual rights, privacy. So the way we kind of have been talking about it is that the resolution would be revamped and say that the city council delegates it to an ad hoc committee to be appointed when the city receives a disability application or an industrial disability retirement application. Other cities have done it this way. I'm not offended, you know, it's, in some ways, it's kind of nice to let the council make that decision because it is a significant decision. It impacts CalPERS ratings on the employer side when you have individuals that have been hurt and then they're into an earlier retirement than what the normal mortality rate schedules would be applying.
And then a follow-up, and there are no timing concerns, that, you know, you know, as a city manager, you'd be able to make a decision fairly quickly, but having to call an ad hoc committee, there's no, I mean, you could call it fairly quickly, so there's no concerns about?
Yeah, I think logistically, as I thought about it, should I get an application for disability retirement or an industrial disability retirement, then I would send out a communication to the council members, addressed to whoever is the mayor at the time, asking that the mayor appoint two individuals to sit on that ad hoc committee to assist in that application. Once an application arrives for an IDR, industrial disability retirement, the city has about six months in which to act, but in the communication we had with our vice mayor, we, the reason we're bringing this tonight is we actually do have an IDR application that has been filed. We're not at the six-month period, but it's starting to, you know, creep up upon us, but we do have time.
And just for clarification for those in the audience, HIPAA is a legislation that basically protects every person's medical records, and there's some very stringent requirements on that. And this, if you're looking at the staff report, it's very clear that this has not been reconciled at the state level. It would be great if the state would deal with this and say, oh, by the way, in these situations, you know, we're going to do this with HIPAA, but right now, it faces us with either delegating that authority to either a subcommittee or to the city manager, or an inability to deal with it in a public forum because of HIPAA restraints. And so it's really another example of the lack of foresight of the state, but I think we can deal with it the best we can by putting a subcommittee ad hoc together and doing that.
Okay. Julie?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with letting staff do a little bit more research. I don't have strong feelings one way or the other about a subcommittee, but if it's legal to do that and we can do it expeditiously without holding things up, I think that's fine. Is there a requirement to have this function in place by a certain time? No? Okay, then we've got a little bit of time to research it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, then we can move this to the upcoming meeting when the staff feels they've done the proper research and can recommend the path forward?
Correct, Mr. Mayor, so you take no action?
Okay.
On item 3C.
All right. Thank you. Next item would be recognitions and presentations. We have none. Then we move into reports. We had no planning commission meeting, no Trails and Landscape Committee meeting, so city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I've been saying for several meetings that we've had the street paving project recently done and completed, and since that time period, there have been several phone calls to the city, I don't know if the city council is receiving them, but the recent slurry seal has created some impressions and misunderstandings of people in town that aren't used to that type of repaving. In the past, the city has done more of just an oil overlay, and the slurry seal actually provides a layer of additional impression upon the street. And I thought it'd be useful to have our city engineer come up and explain the difference because some people are thinking that when the fines are coming off of the street, that the street is eroding, so.
Mr. Hallman?
This guy is not falling?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, we were, had been, or had been asked to address this, and in doing so, I went to a third party, to get a second opinion from an expert in the field, a person that I've known for many years and have worked with in different professional organizations, somebody not attached to the project, so they were objective. And they came out today and looked at the streets with us. We addressed two or three or four different streets to address those. Their contention was that we've, the project has met the specification and that the work was done to the specification that we required. There's a, part of what the company that they work for does in their outreach was just to write a small piece about slurry seal and how it works, and in it, they discuss how the shedding of a slurry seal is a known thing, it's expected, it can last up to two to three months, you know, of course diminishing over time, and it'll actually could take as long as six months for the full completion of the hardening and the curing of the oil or the slurry itself. So this is not to be concerned about, it's expected, it's a part of the project, and so it was, you know, completely natural. They looked at the streets, believed that they were exactly what they should be, just from the viewing them in the field. There were a couple of issues that we can deal with on a punch list, which were very minor, but as far as that goes, I think they addressed all of the concerns that were out there in this, in the community about the continued shedding of the fine aggregate. And one of the other things that's a little unique to the project that we did is, in the slurry seal where you put fine aggregate in, a lot of times it's sand, and, you know, silica sand is a white. In order to preserve the, kind of, the color of the streets so that they are blacker streets, more, you know, through, we specify a black rock that's crushed, so it's the same size as a sand grain, but it's actually black in color, so that when the oils and all they start to fade, the streets don't turn gray, they remain black. And you see that more readily. If you see it in the gutter and you see black fine aggregate, it stands out. Where sand, you don't even see it. So I think that's part of the issue too, is that this aggregate, as it sheds because of its color, is more noticeable and more visible, but it is absolutely to be expected, and the streets are, have met all the specifications that we've required, and the contractor's done a great job for us, so they're really, I don't believe, is any concern, it's just, you know, something new. This is the first time we've used rubber on our street maintenance and rehabilitation, and this is a different approach that we're taking, and so it's new, and there's some learning curve in getting used to it, but overall, I think it's done great, so.
Now, I understand, Scott, that some of the streets were damaged a bit when people drove on them too quickly before they were cured. Has that been repaired?
Those are part of the punch list items that we looked at, that we added two punch list items to the list today in this, you know, little inspection that we did, and they weren't opened too soon. You have to open the streets up, and so the oil and the slurry cures for, you know, three, four hours, and once the emulsion breaks, then you can open the street. It is still subject to scuffing, and that's the title of the paper that they, why does this slurry seal scuff? And, you know, it has to do with heat and, you know, the time of the year and ambient temperature and all, but scuffing is actually, it's to be expected, and it's, you know, it's just a part of the process, doesn't damage the street, but there are two or three areas where, in the process of our tape seal, you put down a rubber chip seal and then come back and you put slurry on top of it to finish and give you the wearing course, the smooth wearing course. There was this delay because of scheduling between those two steps, and so some of the, you know, the aggregate of the chip seal is expected to break loose and become free. That's taken care of by sweeping before you put down a slurry seal. There was some aggregate on a couple of the two cul-de-sacs that we looked at where they didn't sweep it thoroughly enough, they were hustling too much, and so there was loose aggregate left, and it ended up being scuffed in, as you could see where the slurry tray was pulled behind the truck and it picked up some of the aggregate that was left, and then it makes grooves and scuffs it up, so they will fix that. But the actual finalizing of the curing of the process, as I said, can take several months, so there are going to be areas that will scuff in the meantime, but if it doesn't break the, you know, break the surface completely, that's acceptable and it's expected.
And what I was referring to more was the obvious damage done by vehicles driving very quickly after the process?
We did have some breakthroughs, yeah, people jumping barricades, and those were actually touched up by the contractor before they left.
Okay.
They went back and?
And that's been completed?
Yes, they fixed those areas before they left. That wasn't even a punch list item, that didn't make the punch list, it was taken care of during the process, during production.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, start then with the council. Tuy, activities then since our last council meeting?
No, I mean, other than the obvious one, which was Oktoberfest about a week and a half ago, and I know that all of my colleagues here spent most of the weekend at the festival too, but just want to mention two things if I think about that. I think every year that I do, whether it's Oktoberfest or Art and Wine, you kind of get reminded of how wonderful event it is for the community, but how amazing it is that it really does get powered by volunteers only, that, you know, everybody is working, whether it's a couple hours or the entire weekend, but everybody's volunteer there. So I've had, in this time and then on some of the Art and Wines in the past, I've had the task of organizing the adult volunteers, and at the end of the festival, we send out a survey to all the people who volunteer, and one of the questions in the survey is, why do people volunteer? And the number one answer, by far, about 84% of people say, because it's a community event they like to be part of. So I think that highlights our community quite well, but that's it.
Excellent, thank you. David?
Yeah, other than the Oktoberfest, and again, I saw everybody out here, I saw CW out there volunteering, it was great. It is, you know, again, an awesome event, and it was well put on by the CBCA. Once again, we have to thank the CBCA for all that they do for that, and remind the community that all the money raised will go back into the community through scholarships, payment for various projects throughout the city, all sorts of things, and it is just a great event and glad to be part of it.
Okay. Julie?
Yeah. Attended the Regional Planning Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Association of Bay Area Governments. We had a presentation from staff on a New Horizons project, which is examining a minimum of three different futures, sort of condensed growth into very smaller areas, mostly in the urban core, do it like we did in the 80s, which is urban sprawl, which is suburban sprawl, which is busting through urban growth boundaries, things like that, that didn't go over very well, or somewhere in the middle in how that works. I actually raised several points, we've talked about for several years as we're going forward with our next Sustainable Community Strategy Plan Bay Area 2050, that we will add another designation besides the Priority Development Areas and the Priority Conservation Areas to add Priority Production Areas, and that'll be focusing jobs in certain areas. And one of the things that I've been fighting for a long time with my Greater East Bay and North Bay colleagues is to get some kind of incentive on a regional level to bring jobs to the Greater East Bay and North Bay, to where the people already live, to make the quality of life a little better so that not everyone has to commute to Silicon Valley and San Francisco, because clearly our transportation system cannot keep up with the number of jobs being grown in the core urban areas, and we're going to have to find a way to cope with that and to improve the quality of life for those workers who live out here. So that's been one of my focus points for a very long time, and I asked for Priority Production Areas to be put into the plan last time. Staff didn't feel like they could get there, but I have been promised they will be part of this plan, and so I will be tenacious about making sure that they make this one. So that was a really good, vibrant discussion for about two and a half hours with about 50 people in the room, and it was not just elected officials, but a lot of the stakeholders, nonprofits, the building community, everybody was there, so it was a good discussion. I attended Oktoberfest and worked a couple of long ticket shifts, and then came back this last week and had multiple Metropolitan Transportation Commission meetings, and as the Association of Bay Area Governments representative to MTC, I am on the Designated Executive Director Selection Committee to choose a new executive director for MTC. And you may have seen, there have been a few editorials in The Chronicle and a few other papers about what we should be looking for, but it will be a national, if not international search, so we're working on that. Oh, Mayor's Conference in Hercules, I attended on behalf of the city, the only one there. Cindy Gershon, who many of you know, who's in charge of the Mayor's Cook-Off, was there to give a presentation. She is also the teacher who instructs at Concord, Diablo, Mount Diablo High School, and their healthy eating and gardening project, teaching the kids how to grow their own food and make healthy meals and aspects of cooking, and she's got a project to bring it to the entire Bay Area, so it's pretty exciting to see what she's doing. Anyway, that's it.
Good, thank you. I attended a subcommittee meeting also of the County Connection on Friday, October 5th, and it was the Operating and Scheduling Subcommittee. And I think the most interesting piece that we were covered on, and I thought the audience might find some interest, was on some training that's underway with all of the transit operators, the bus drivers working for County Connection, dealing with human trafficking, and evidence that they should be looking out for has potential human trafficking issues. And they went into quite a bit of detail on how buses are being used more and more to transport people involved in that industry because it cannot be tracked like a car could. If someone sees a child abducted and put in a car and driven away, they can get a license plate and that car can be tracked, but when they jump on a bus, it's much more difficult to track that individual down, and they're able to move around a little more freely. So they're training the bus drivers on clues to look for, if someone feels uncomfortable, if something just doesn't seem right, and they have ways to notify law enforcement to get involved and to monitor that situation as well. So that was very reassuring that once this problem has been identified, they're conducting training. Training's required throughout the state by the end of 2020, but because of the incidence of people using more and more buses in the Bay Area, County Connection stepped up that training, is almost fully complete now with all training that was required, that they felt that was required, and they're over a year ahead of schedule because of the danger that's presented to the population. So it was very encouraging that they've seen that and are moving on it. And then on the first weekend, the 6th and 7th of October, I also worked the Oktoberfest, and again, very successful event, and as already been pointed out, all of the money raised goes right back into the community. This is a volunteer effort, it's not put on by a chamber or a city, so there's no overhead to be paid, they just pay the expenses to run the festival, and it goes back into projects that the club approves for donations, back into our community, scholarships and a number of other things. I want to point out in particular to you is the volunteer coordinator, that's why she had that information on the survey, and that's one of the toughest jobs and the most important jobs to ensure that we have enough volunteers so that we can continue to put on these events, because it does require a lot of community volunteers. When you look around at the people selling tickets, pouring beer, pouring wine, taking water and glasses, all the workers at those festivals are volunteers, so encourage you to consider that, volunteering yourself for any event that's coming up. And our next big one, or the biggest one actually, starting next year, will be the Art and Wine. So when you see that schedule, and it's the last weekend in April, you might think about volunteering for that. So you'll see that the council stays busy between our meetings, so thank you for the reports. All right, now, again, because we have an election approaching and we have two spots on the council that are up for election, and we have four candidates running, we do give the candidates an opportunity to address the council and the audience, and mix up the four, all four are here this evening, so this evening, I'll start off with Carl C.W. Wolf.
That was my arm. My name is Carl C.W. Wolf, I'm a candidate for the Clayton City Council. Hello. I'm a retired creative director, a planning commissioner currently, 30-year resident of Clayton, a CBCA member, community volunteer, and the announcer for the Fourth of July Parade, and I got my flu shot today. My campaign, by the way, has been largely funded by myself. However, there have been some donations gratefully accepted from some private citizens, and that has totaled $185. No institutional money has been received from my campaign, and I filed the required Form 460 with the city and the state on time on September 27th. It's a matter of public record, and every penny I've received and spent is listed in that document. My candidacy is to champion all Claytonians because the future of Clayton depends on us coming together to make solid decisions so we can become an even better community. Our future will take vision, great planning, great leadership, and citizen input. In my 30 years here, I've seen Clayton evolve and grow in a positive way. We now have more goods and services, restaurants and recreation than ever before, and these things fit into Clayton seamlessly, and have become a part of the fabric of our lives. Things like the Grove Park, this library building, Fire Station 11, the CVS Pharmacy, Clayton Station Shopping Center, Downtown Bachi, these things have all come to Clayton within the past two decades, and now we can't imagine living our lives without them. This responsible growth requires us to engage in conversation and to talk with each other, not at each other, and to examine all of the facts and make educated decisions to benefit all of Clayton. And I take Clayton very seriously. I'm retired now and I intend to serve all Claytonians, listening to their needs and concerns, and to protect our small-town way of life, and always with an eye on fiscal Dave Shue and I have an ice cream social coming up at the Cup of Joe on next Friday, this coming Friday at 2:15. We invite everybody to come down. If you have questions for me, I'm certainly available, I'll answer anything to anyone. Clayton is my new full-time job, and I'm just getting started at it, and I ask for your support, and I thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I decided to run back in July, I did so for two primary reasons. One was a lack of communication, something that I perceived personally and that I observed at my attendance of meetings, and also a lack of representation. In short, the citizens of Clayton felt like they didn't matter. I saw many times where people pled with the city council for actions or communications simply were not heeded. I'm sad I'm sad to report that hasn't changed. I've spoken to literally hundreds of Clayton citizens who echo those same concerns today. That's why I'm running, to change that. If I'm elected as a council member from day one, there will be communication. I will always not only be open to communication, I will reach out through town hall meetings, both virtual, online meetings and in-person meetings. If you've got a problem, I want to hear about it, no matter how big, no matter how small. You're also going to get representation because I'm going to act on those communications. If you tell me how you want me to vote, when the majority tells me how they want me to vote, that's how I'm going to vote. I want to listen to everybody, though. And I certainly am not going to denigrate people who have an opinion that's different than mine by calling them a vocal minority, especially when they're concerned with people's safety, the safety of their children or their home prices. That's not bringing people together. That's divisiveness. What you'll also get from me is respect. If I'm sitting up there and a citizen has taken time, even though it's three minutes to present to me, I'm not going to be fiddling around on my iPad, I'm not going to be rolling my eyes, and I'm sure as heck not going to be smirking at him. I will give them the respect they deserve and act accordingly. Another thing that they'll get from me is transparency. You will always know where I stand on things. You're not going to have to delve or post numerous postings on Nextdoor. You want to know how much I've, is it my campaign fund? Ask me. I'll tell you. You want to know how much I've spent? I'll tell you. I'll even provide the receipts. More importantly, you're going to know where I stand on major issues. I'm not going to hide behind terms like responsible growth or vision. I have very specific ideas when it comes to Clayton. When it comes to downtown, I don't believe downtown should be for sale. In fact, I will make it a point to make sure that lot doesn't get sold. I want to keep it open for Oktoberfest that you all just been touting. Oktoberfest shouldn't have to be moved to some park up the hill. It should be right where it is. And if that lot is sold, that won't happen. Given the opportunity, I'll use my own sawzall to cut that for sale sign down. You'll also have an opportunity to know that I will never support three-story buildings downtown because that simply is not in accordance with my interpretation of the city plan. Basically, with me as a councilman, you will always have a voice. Even if it's only one vote, you will always have a voice, you will always have my ear and a vote for me is a vote for you.
Thank you. Next up, Dave Shue.
First of all, I want to say that CW kind of listed all of the things that have occurred in Clayton for the last two decades. And I want to just reiterate that I have been a part of that. All of those wonderful things that we have now, this city council, this CBCA, that we have all been a part of and we've all volunteered for, has put those things on and I'm very proud of those accomplishments. Obviously, it's election season and you can see at the city, the county, the state and the federal level, there's a lot of promises being made and there's a lot of attack ads. You know, one thing that struck me is when you're qualified to run for an office, I think you see the people telling the voters, here's why I'm qualified, here's why you should vote for me. When you don't have those qualifications, what you resort to is attacking and bringing down the others and trying to push them down. I think when the citizens of Clayton look at this, there are two candidates that have a proven track record of commitment and volunteerism and service to the community and that's CW and myself. I am proud to have received the support of our local Clayton pioneer, which for the first time endorsed candidates and endorsed both CW and myself. I am proud to have the support of the entire city council, as does CW. And also the support of past mayor, first mayor of Clayton, Bob Hoyer, former mayors Pete Lawrence, Howard Geller, Hank Stratford and Bill Walcott. Every single person that has been a part of building this city in the way that you all love it has endorsed myself and CW. And I think that's a very telling, you know, moment. CW mentioned, we do have an ice cream social on this Friday, 2:15. We hope to see anybody that still has remaining questions down at Cup of Joe. And then there's a final meet and greet on the 27th from 4:30 to 6:30 or thereabouts. If you email me at shue@rankinlaw.com, we'll get you that information and you can, you know, get all your questions answered. But I've been a very big part of this city for 20 years and I want to continue to be a big part of it. And so I look forward to your vote on November 6th. Thank you.
All right. Jeff Wong.
My name is Jeff Wong, running for city council. I'm an active CPA in private industry, the treasurer of my small HOA. Been a Clayton resident for a little over nine years. My family moved to Clayton to raise our kids. We came from the great schools, safe neighborhoods and small-town feeling charm. Back then, we had a two-year-old and a newborn. Now, we are proud parents of an 11, nine and five-year-old. They're all attending the great schools here in Clayton. And while I don't have experience as a member of local government that two of the other candidates have, I do have quite a bit of experience auditing local government. What I bring to the table is experienced decision-making throughout my career. I started as a government auditor working for a private CPA firm. My focus was on local governments. Here in Contra Costa County was one of my clients, Pleasanton, Napa County, Stockton, Modesto, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, among others. And throughout my career, I've been a senior manager of accounting, assistant controller and controller at various entities from software to healthcare to insurance, always managing large dispersed teams responsible for executing enterprise-wide vision in highly regulated environments. You may think that Clayton is already wonderful, as Mr. Shue says, why do you want to change things? And that's the thing, I don't want to change things. I want to preserve all the wonderful qualities of Clayton that brought me and so many other families here. When things are going well, I think most people are content to let them continue, as am I. It's when things aren't going well that folks like me need to step up and speak out. And that time is now. Many of the great qualities of the city that the city has had are at risk in recent years. Past accomplishments do not excuse current problematic actions. With a general disinterest in engaging with those who disagree and labeling them as a vocal minority, Mr. Shue and Mr. Wolf do not represent what Clayton wants. Mr. Shue, with his 30% frequent absentee rate this term and consistent unanimous voting record, doesn't represent the diverse views of the residents of Clayton. His longstanding support of selling the city, including the open downtown lot where all of our events and festivals are held, to put in memory care facility, is not what the residents of Clayton want. Mr. Wolf will tout his experience on the planning commission, but in just over two years, the commission has canceled over 65% of their meetings. The mere 17 meetings that Mr. Wolf did attend does not indicate the executive leadership that's expected of a council position. Mr. Wolf also wants to develop the downtown and sell the city-owned property, as he stated. This is not what the residents of Clayton wants. So what do I want to do that's different than the current direction the council is heading? A few key things. Clayton should not be for sale. If elected, I'd reevaluate whether we should relinquish control of the city on land by selling our assets. Clayton should protect all of its residents. If elected, I'd pursue updating the parolee housing ordinance that recently passed that led to significant portions of the city. Clayton should not have high-density three-story housing in its downtown. And if elected, I'd begin the process of updating the downtown-specific plan to meet the changing needs of Clayton residents today. And Clayton should not restrict free speech. If elected, I'd amend the unconstitutional sign ordinance that has now been abandoned to ensure compliance with our constitutional rights. If you agree with these efforts, then voting for myself and Brian Bedell is the best way to see these things come to fruition. This is what it looks like when candidates speak clearly and plainly about what they want. We can do a lot better and it's time for a change. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So that's the end of the comment period then for the candidates. We move then to public comment and this is where members of the audience can address the council on items that are not on this evening's agenda. I do have a speaker card from Ann Stanaway.
Ann Stanaway, 1553 Haviland Place, Clayton, California. I want to thank y'all, you city councilmen, you're so lovely at the Oktoberfest. I want to thank y'all for going to that Oktoberfest and for completely ignoring that Haviland Court is completely blocked by unconscionable residents who just don't care that they violate the California fire codes. And the city doesn't care about enforcing them either. Also want to thank you for allowing the county to put in parolees into the city. Now, it's wonderful that the county says that they're going to control the parolees, but you and the council haven't bothered to go to the city and actually inquire what the county is going to do for the city of Clayton. I want to thank you for going to the Oktoberfest and completely ignoring your city council obligations. Thank you.
All right. Have no other speaker cards? And no one coming forward? Counsel, have any comments? All right, I'll close off public comment, go to public hearings. We have none. Action items, have none. For council items, I do want to indicate that council member Diaz, who is not here this evening, did ask that we place an item on the agenda at a future meeting. And he suggested early next year would be appropriate when the election and everything dies down a bit. But he would like the council to consider, and he'll be at a council meeting to go into detail on what he would like discussed. But what he mentioned was considering the expansion of the 1,000-foot buffer zone for the ordinance 483, dealing with the parolee housing. Also to consider including private parks as public parks and to consider a formal outreach program explaining the impact of this new ordinance on the community. So he's suggesting and requesting that this item be placed on a future agenda early next year. Any other items being suggested for agenda items? Nope. No? All right, then. We have no closed session, so we are adjourned until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, November 6th, which is election night. Thank you for coming.